Hearing devices are up here. If you need one, please see Ms. Swanson and she can set you up. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded when addressing council. Please sign in and state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you for your understanding. Line item one, introductory items, pledge of allegiance. If Councilman Torres will lead us in that, please. All right. Thank you, Councilman Torres. Line item 1.2, roll call. Ward one, Councilman Hannon is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zabrowski is present. Ward three, Councilman Lau is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present. And ward five, Councilman Mendoza is present. Line item 1.3, public forum. This portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on the agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand features Zoom, star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may at his discretion hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be provided to city council, but will not be added to the record during the live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be included in the record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time?
Hi, Becky Hall for the record. And there's no paper, so I'm not going to say anything. So I'm here representing the Fernley, Fourth of July. And mayor, if you'd like to be in the parade this year, we gave April an application for her to fill out. So fill it out, turn it in. With your insurance, make sure that you're insured so you don't run into people.
I will make sure to do that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any other public input? Is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody on the phone. Okay, we'll move on to line item 1.4, looking for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hannon.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second that motion.
Motion by Councilman Hannon, second by Councilman Lau. Please vote. Are we good? Yours isn't working?
Apparently the, I'm gonna vote.
Okay, come, um, ward one, Councilman Hannon.
Yes.
Ward two, Councilwoman Zabrowski.
Yes.
Ward three, Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Ward four, Councilman Torres.
Yes.
Ward five, Councilman Mendoza. Oh, there it is. It passed. Oh, well, it says four to nothing, but it passed five zero.
Yeah.
Oh, you think, yeah, you, you were on there. Oh. Okay, uh, line item two, consent agenda, looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilman Lau.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Well, I have a motion by Councilman Lau, second by Councilman Hannon. Please vote. Let's do a manual, um, ward one, Councilman Hannon.
Mr. Mayor, I had to go back and log back in, so she directed us to go out of the agenda back in, but I vote yes.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Passes five zero. Well, Ms. Swanson, would you please read the business licenses? Thank you. Is, is your mic on?
Okay, can you hear me now? Five Plumbing, plumbing contractor, A1 Testing Site Services, excavation contractor, Beach and Suns Mechanical, HVAC contractor, Guzman and Suns Drywall, drywall contractor, Tractor Supply Company West Retail Sales, Core Estates Construction Services, residential and small commercial contractor, Just Work Enterprises, new owner of Anytime Fitness, Forty One Twenty LLC Commercial Property Rentals, Gallagher IS Lawn Care, Silver State Construction, residential and small commercial contractor, Tamarack Electrical Service, electrical contractor, B C Handyman, B L Lawn Care, All Points Bar and Grill, new location at seven ninety East Main Street, Matheson Masonry, masonry contractor, C A Framex Residential and Small Commercial Contractor, Buddy Wagner Consulting, software and technology consulting services, Ridge Line Restoration and Renovation, residential and small commercial contractor, The Electrical Conductor, electrical contractor, Susanna Contreras, cosmetologist, MLS Heating and Air Conditioning, HVAC contractor, West Woods Inc. Carpentry, carpentry contractor, Via Real Estate, commercial property rentals, and Barnum and Cilio Electric, electrical contractor. Lots of them tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. We will now move on to line item three. Uh, reports, uh, three point one, reports from city staff, city council, the mayor, including but not limited to monthly statistical reports from city departments. Uh, so we will start with Sheriff's Department, Chief Deputy Brandingham. Ms. Swanson, I believe your mic is still on.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Chief Deputy Mitch Brandingham, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office. It's been a couple of weeks since I've been with you guys. Commander Miller was up for the last meeting at my stead. We had some other matters going on across the county I had to tend to. Um, and he reported back on kind of what happened and it sounded like things went well. Um, and I, I appreciate him coming up and representing us at that meeting. Uh, it's been a very interesting start to the summer for us here in Fernley. Uh, the warm weather has kind of rolled in and I, this is the start of my fourth year here in Fernley and just finishing on my third year. And it seems like I said every year in about May or June, the warm weather is here. We've seen an uptick in crime around the city. And we've seen an uptick in arrests to coincide with that. The deputies are extremely busy out on the streets. And, uh, we've seen a couple of interesting cases that have gone on up here over the last month or so. Uh, I'm gonna get to the one from, from last night and make sure everybody's briefed on that. And, uh, we worked through the, the press release on it. But, uh, we've had another incident here a couple of weeks ago where we found, uh, two, uh, illegal immigrants here in Fernley in a vehicle that's all blacked out. They have tape over the license plates. They've altered the vehicle descriptions to look like a different make and model of vehicle. Uh, these guys are located with, um, a large quantity of methamphetamine and firearms. And they had fake names and fake IDs and all sorts of stuff. Um, and so they're currently in custody right now. We're working with immigration to process the federal charges on them and, and work through that process. But, uh, just an example of some of the types of crimes that we're starting to see here. Um, and we're out chasing them as hard as we can. Uh, the special investigations unit has been spending a pretty exceptional amount of time up here in Fernley, uh, working on the investigative component of those things. And we had the investigators up today doing a bunch of follow-up on the incident from last night. Uh, so we do have an increased law enforcement presence here in the city for the time being, and that's going to continue into the summer, uh, with, with some saturation events, both on the traffic side as well as, uh, on the investigation side, uh, trying to knock down some of these incidents before they really get going. Uh, we always kind of expect an uptick in a little bit of criminal activity as the, the weather gets warmer, particularly, uh, this winter, uh, things slowed down quite a bit for us. Um, we still had a couple of major incidents, but most of the enforcement that we were doing was drug related and really proactive law enforcement activity. Uh, and now we're starting to see the calls for service tick up a little bit. And, uh, so we're working through the processes to manage those things, uh, around the city. Uh, we have a new sergeant assigned here in Fernley. Uh, so for the time being, I have four sergeants working here in Fernley. Sergeant Wayne Hawley uh, is being transferred up to us and K nine Boris is coming with him. Sergeant Hawley worked here in Fernley for a really, really long time. A vast majority of his career, uh, was up here. And, uh, he's gonna bring, uh, some investigative experience, uh, and some pretty strong leadership experience from his time in the Navy and things like that, that we're looking forward to having in the squad up here in the city. And then, uh, come about the mid summer or so, Sergeant Kosak, who's working the school stuff is gonna be transferring out of Fernley, uh, down to Mason Valley to help them out with some staffing needs and things like that. Uh, until the school year gets back up and going, then we'll kind of reevaluate what that situation looks like. And if he's gonna come back up or if we're gonna transfer another school resource officer up here to Fernley. But, uh, for now Sergeant Hawley started here with us on May first, so uh, people should start seeing him in another K nine unit around the city. So there'll be two K nine units that we have working out of, uh, Fernley here. Uh, that being said, I'm gonna get into the press release from the incident we had last night. Uh, we prepared a timeline of events that came out this afternoon and was released to the media and posted on social media, but I think it does a pretty good job summarizing the event. So I'm just gonna work through that timeline. And, uh, then I'll try and answer any questions if anybody has any. Uh, so the timeline of events here between approximately five forty-five PM and six PM last night, uh, three juveniles were at the park on the swings located off Corey Way, where they were approached by a male suspect who's now in custody. Uh, and he used both coercion and low levels of force to make them leave the park with him. At approximately six seventeen PM, dispatch received a phone call from a reporting party stating that her brother had texted her and that someone was threatening to kill him. Uh, the reporting party was currently driving around trying to find her brother. At about six eighteen PM, uh, dispatch sent deputies to what they called a threats call. And it, right about six twenty-three PM, the first units arrived on scene. Uh, six thirty-nine PM, uh, the victim's phone pinged to the location of our suspect residence. Not exactly to the residence, those pings kinda come into an area. Uh, so deputies immediately went to that area and started looking around for these kids. And about seven minutes later, at six forty-six PM, the reporting party who was still in contact with deputies, uh, was able to pull up an application on her phone and track our juvenile victims' cell phones. As they were working through that, they were able to narrow that search area down. Uh, so by the time six fifty-five PM comes around, we receive a nine-one-one call from one of these juveniles. Um, as that call is happening, deputies are already entering the yard where these kids were located. So it was like a simultaneous occurring of events. Uh, the phone calls going into dispatch at that time, but the deputies hadn't received that information yet. Uh, at six fifty-nine PM, the deputies locate these juveniles in a crawl space. Kind of in that four minutes time between six fifty-five and six fifty-nine PM, they have contact with, uh, the male suspect who was taken into custody. And they detain him and put him in the back of a, a patrol vehicle, uh, while the other deputies are searching the area. And they find, uh, some siding and a barricade kind of up against the side of this house leading to the crawl space. They were able to move that stuff out of the way and gain access where they found, uh, the three juveniles there under the, the trailer. Uh, they conducted a very brief investigation, ultimately taking our suspect into custody at seven oh three PM. Uh, he was booked on a whole slew of, of criminal charges. Uh, initially, we're still working through that stuff. Like you said, we have investigators out all over the, the city gathering security camera footage, uh, looking for witnesses, things like that, that, that kind of saw what was going on or may have seen, uh, our victims with the suspect, uh, moving from one location to the other. Uh, there is a, obviously a lot of information when we have one of these types of calls happen and a, a long process uh, between now and when we get to the court side of things to make sure that we get, uh, uh, the prosecution conviction of this guy so he can go to prison for a long time. Um, currently we're working with three category A felonies, which are all up to a life sentence, uh, for each one of those. And, uh, we're confident that, that those charges are, are gonna be prosecuted at this point in time. As far as injuries and stuff to our victims, uh, they did sustain what, what I would consider substantial injuries. Um, the law has a separate definition for that that we're gonna have to work through and see where exactly that stuff comes out at. But, uh, it, it was not a great situation. I, I would like to take a minute to commend, uh, the deputies and the sergeant that were on scene. They worked very, very quickly through this process. You know, most of the investigation locating these kids took place in about fifteen, twenty minutes time. So, uh, very nice work by them and, and I appreciate them going out and doing this. These calls do have a lasting impact on, on everybody involved and, uh, we have a lot of work to do to put the pieces back together for both the family and, and the deputies and sergeant to respond to this call. Um, and, uh, we'll be updating information on this case as it becomes more available to us. With that being said, if you have to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Chief Deputy. I, I, I read the press conference, uh, the press release earlier and I saw that the bail amount, I was happy to see such a high bail amount. Um, I think any, um, child that's apprehended by somebody and then returned to their family and, uh, uh, I know they're harmed, but they're returned, um, and so they can continue their life is a success story for us and for you. And I commend you and your deputies for a job well done. Um, I wasn't in Fernley yesterday, so I didn't, usually I have the radio going on. I'm listening to all this stuff and I'm usually texting the mayor or somebody. Uh, so I didn't get to hear it, but, uh, I'll definitely go back and listen. But you guys are doing a great job and, um, we really appreciate everything you've done. Uh, really, uh, this makes a huge impact on our community and, um, after the, um, the kidnapping and the murder of a, of a, of a female, uh, several years ago, I know this is near and dear to everyone's heart that, uh, kids come first and, uh, we all care about that. So thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. And in regards to bail, uh, you know, when something like this happens and, uh, we started interacting with the, the courts and district attorney's office, all of our bails are set by statute and then we have to go through those bail hearings and stuff to get those bails adjusted. Um, in this particular matter, uh, we immediately said, this guy needs to be held on a no bail hold. Um, that seems pretty straightforward to me. There are some constitutional protections in place. The only time they can place a no bail hold on somebody without some significant history and, and work done on the backend is if we have a murder charge. Um, in this case, we don't have that. And so they said, we're required to, to place a bail on him. Um, and they're gonna work through that process. I know that, uh, the district attorney's office is actively working to get a no bail hold in place on this guy. But, uh, they have to do the legwork on the backend to make sure that meets constitutional requirements, which is, is really unfortunate, but it's the, the situation that we have.
So I want to commend your officers, your deputies for quick reaction. You said from the first call to apprehension was twenty minutes?
Not from the first call, but from, from about the time they had something to investigate. Um, which was, you know, right there around six thirty-nine PM. Uh, we get the first, like, actual item that we can start investigating and looking for these kids. And we had a suspect in custody by seven oh three PM, so.
That is still amazing work. That, that, that's a great job. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you for that.
Councilman Hannon.
Thanks. I just wanted to add, uh, I always look at the bails on all these things and I read the friendly reporter and, you know, they're seven thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. And this was nine hundred and I think sixty-ish, is that? And, and I was happy. I, I saw that and, and well, maybe it's a bail, no bails is more appropriate. I, I was happy to see that it was that, that large amount of money. I think that's a substantial amount and it makes a, a valid point. Um, and maybe what I should have said earlier is any child that's returned to their family is a success story. So, uh, once again, thanks, thanks for your hard work. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Deputy. Appreciate you. I don't see nobody from the fire department or the school board, so we will move on to city staff, uh, city manager Benjamin Marchand.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to first start off with some good news that I got this morning. I heard, um, first from the AP, Associated Press, asking me about the Fernley lands bill. And I called our Congressman Mark Amade's office and confirmed that the amendment to the lands bill was adopted with the continuing budget resolution of the House, so it's gotten out of committee. And that's a huge step for the Fernley lands bill. Um, it's now going to be heard on the House floor. And then it will have a few more hurdles to go through to get through the Senate and the House Senate reconciliation bill, but that was really great news to hear. We have a number of events coming up this month. On the ninth, this week, we start with the Fernley's Art Week that is being presented by Fernley Aces, who is a recipient of the Fernley Convention and Tourism Authority, uh, funding. And we have flyers for both Fernley Art Week and Music Murals and Margaritas in the back. And there's a lot of activities going on every day for the next week, so please, uh, check that out. On May sixteenth, the Music Murals and Margaritas will have a kickoff party from six thirty to ten PM at McCoppers. And then Saturday, May seventeenth is the big day. Uh, there are other, um, events coming up later in the month, which we'll announce at the next council meeting, but, uh, a lot of great things going on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Ms. Ramble? Did you have some introductions?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment, um, to introduce our new senior planner. This is Alisa Johansson. And she joins us most recently from the city of Seattle. And, but she is a Northern Nevada native, um, UNR graduate, so we're happy to, that she chose to come back home. And we are thrilled to have her.
Well, welcome to the city of Fernley. I appreciate the work that you're gonna be doing and what you already started. Uh, let's go ahead and, um, yes, uh, Deputy City Manager, City, uh, Lydia Oltek.
Good evening. I want to give everyone heads up that this Saturday, May tenth, is the first annual Fernley Business Expo. So there's gonna be forty-two tables, businesses, resources, and food trucks. Um, so really excited. I hope lots of people show up. There's gonna be, as I said, businesses sort of, um, recruiting, showing what they do, and also resources if you're interested in starting a business. So, spread the word. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other city staff, uh, reports that we need? All right, seeing none, then we will go ahead and start with, uh, council, Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, while, uh, the city clerk was reading off the business licenses, I was looking up uh, the All Points Bar and Grill. That was that, uh, obnoxious, uh, loud noise that came from my phone. Uh, they have an opening date of June sixth, and so my taste buds are extremely excited about that. And, uh, I wish them all the best. I know it's been sort of a lengthy, uh, process to get to where they are. I wish them all the best. Um, the second thing I wanted to say was we had, um, the mayor, myself and, um, city manager Marchand had some time yesterday to go to the, uh, Fernley Estates and meet the folks over there, uh, did a little Q and A. Uh, and we were there for about an hour. Nice group of people. We were excited to go. I was at least. I know the rest of you were smiling the whole time, so I guess you were excited. Um, and it was a good time, so, uh, we get to interact with them. And, um, it's good to go out and talk to the people in the public and, uh, it's good folks over there. So I appreciate them inviting us.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Zabrowski?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ward three, Councilman Lau.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we had a grand opening for the Tractor Supply Company and it was a great grand opening.
Councilman Torres?
Um, just a couple of notes. The Senior Citizen Advisory Committee will be at the Business Expo, handing out fans, uh, to the seniors for our senior fan drive, getting ready for summer. Um, and the FCTA is now accepting grant applications for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, round one. Applications will be accepted until May thirtieth at five PM. This round is for events that take place from July first of twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And all applications must be submitted by five PM on Friday, May thirtieth. Uh, the FCTA Board will review the grant applications and make grant selections during the June ninth FCTA Board Meeting, which starts at six PM and it's held here. Uh, as a note, we no longer have the mandatory applicant meeting. However, if it is your first time submitting a grant application to the FCTA, you are strongly encouraged to contact the city manager's office prior to submittal. Um, detailed information is posted to the friendly website and Facebook. And the number to contact at the city manager's office is seven seven five, seven eight four, nine eight five eight. Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Nothing to report this evening.
Well, the only, the only thing that I would really like to report that, um, Councilman Torres and myself uh, was able to present in front of the legislature on SB sixty-nine. And, um, I think we did a really good job representing the city of Fernley, so, um, I want to thank Councilman Torres for, um, attending and, and participating in that, um, in that, um, activity. Um, anything else you want to mention about that?
No.
That session, you're good? Okay. Yeah, um, all right. So I guess that's all the reports. Now we will move on to line item three point two, state in Nevada legislative update. Are they on the phone? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Uh, Daniel Judasey, um, here giving the legislative update report from Flynn Judasey Government Affairs. And to echo the mayor's comments, you guys did an absolutely excellent job. We were texted later on that, uh, you know, you all put the nail in the coffin there on, uh, SB sixty-nine. So as it stands, without an amendment, that bill is likely not to pass. So kudos again, um, to you all for, for your comments and coming down. It makes such a, a, a major impression when we get, uh, you know, the, the mayor and the council member there, because I mean, the, the legislators hear from us lobbyists all the time. So it just, it means so much more. So thank you. Um, legislative updates, uh, the big one was the economic forum on May first, where, uh, we are actually able to start closing budgets. Um, came in a little bit better than anticipated. Uh, we still do have a shortfall of the biennium, uh, of about three hundred and fifty million dollars, but they were expecting quite a bit more. Um, so a lot of, uh, bills with fiscal notes attached likely aren't going to be moving very, uh, moving beyond, uh, moving very far. So, um, that's kind of what we're hearing from legislators. Um, in terms of the economic development bills, the city's been tracking both, uh, SB three sixty-four, which is the rail abatements. That is exempt right now. We are being told that we should be getting a hearing relatively soon. Um, the mayor and council member Torres came and, uh, in support of that bill in the past, so we'll, we'll ask them to do that again when we get our assembly hearing. Um, and then, um, uh, the assembly member Backus's bill, AB four sixty-two, that's the inland port bill. Um, that one is also exempt, so we will probably hear it, uh, later on in session. Right now, everybody's trying to, uh, move through the non-exempt bills, because we do have a couple of deadlines coming up. The first deadline being May sixteenth, and that's a committee passage in the second house. And then the second deadline being May twenty-third, which is second house passage. So anything that doesn't get out of committee or second house passage that is an exempt will, will die on those days. So we'll, we'll keep you all informed. Um, just want to say again, a big thank you to, uh, you know, mayor, council, and, uh, city manager Marchand for being very quick, um, in evaluating bills, getting back to us and allowing us to do a, a, a good job and, and, uh, you know, reaching out to the legislatures and, and getting Fernley's opinion. And with that, happy to answer any questions, um, that, uh, reaching out to the legislatures and getting Friendly's opinion. And with that, happy to answer any questions that council or mayor may have.
It looks like we have no questions at this time, so we appreciate your update.
Excellent. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. We'll now move on to line item four, Proclamations by the mayor. But before I do the proclamation, I have a mayor spotlight. This is a very special spotlight. This is Friendly High School's Jackson Honsholdz. On behalf of the city of Friendly, I'm excited to announce that Friendly's own Jackson Honsholdz has been named Distinguished Student Leader of the National Association of Student Council. The National Association of Student Council Distinguished Student Leader Program is a recognition initiative designed for high school students who demonstrate outstanding leadership skills. Participants compete in a series of leadership tasks and activities, accumulating in the creation of a comprehensive portfolio that shows evidence of their leadership journey across various areas such as goal-setting, team-building, and civic engagement. Upon successful completion, students are awarded the title of NASC Distinguished Student Leader, a prestigious accolade acknowledging their commitment and excellence in student leadership. Jackson was the first student in Lion County School District to ever receive this recognition. Jackson is currently student body president in Friendly High School and has been active in student leadership since fifth grade and active in student council since eighth grade. He has served on the student council each of the three years in high school. Jackson has also been elected to serve as Nevada Association's Student Council Secretary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In his spare time, he plays men's volleyball for T Street Volleyball Club and Dayton Volleyball Club. This is Jackson's third year serving as manager of the girls volleyball team. Jackson plans to study economic or political science at the University of Santa Barbara and possibly get involved in student government at the collegiate level. Jackson is a unique leader, and his leadership skills come naturally to him as they are part of his personality. The mayor, city council, and entire city of Friendly are so proud of you and the positive impact you have made on our community and role model that you are to your fellow students. We can't wait to see what the future holds for you. So, so I do have a certificate here that says, presented to Jackson Honsholdz, the first student in Lion County School District to ever receive this distinguished student leadership of National Association Student Council. The mayor, city council, and entire city of Friendly are so proud of you and the positive impact you have made on our community and the role model you are to your fellow students. Thank you. So I have a couple of proclamations on, and these actually are to inner office. So I'll read the first one. I'll read both of these and then I'll present you, I'll present the certificates when I'm done reading both of them. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, the time honored for vital part of the local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional ink between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be their ever mindful in their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal services to all. Whereas municipal clerk serves as an information center for all functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerk continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state provident countries or counties and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Therefore, I, Nellie McIntyre, Mayor of City of Friendly, on behalf of the city council, do recognize the week of May fifth through the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, I think I'm supposed to say, as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Kim Swanson, and her staff and all the municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Tell them. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. I will be down there in just a minute. Let me read this one, then we can do them both at once. Whereas the city of Friendly, or city of Friendly is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety essential roles of homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through devotion and vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineering, building, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of International Code Council and nonprofit that bring together local, state, territorial, tribial, and federal officials who are experts in building environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standard to protect us in the buildings that where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety. Our code officials who assert us of safety, sustainable and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Game On, the theme for Building Safety Month two thousand and twenty-five, encourages us all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety for our personal, local, and global scale. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety resilience, economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribial, and federal building safety departments in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Nellie McIntyre, Mayor of the city of Friendly, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand and twenty-five as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. So, thank you. That's, that's always fun for me to be able to do. Now move on to line item five, Staff Reports, five point one, Discussion Possible Action to Make a Determination Pursuit to Step Four of the Grievance Process Regarding Grievance Number Zero One Dash Two Five Filed by IBEW One Two Four Five Pertaining to the CBA Violation Requirement to Negotiate New Classifications. Who's presenting? Aaron?
This is a new process for me coming to step four before the city council on a grievance. And if a representative from IBEW is here to speak on behalf of their grievance, I would suggest they, they present their case to the city council. Are they not online?
Okay, so no action needs to be taken at this time?
Aaron Morrison, City Attorney, this should be a presentation from IBEW, so I'm looking for the representative here.
So they were notified and nobody's online and nobody's here?
My advice at this time would be take no action table the matter.
To do what? Take no action?
Take no action and table the matter.
Okay, so do I need a motion to table this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, if somebody wants to make a motion, Councilman Torres?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this items.
A second then.
We have a motion by Councilman Low, seconded by Councilman Torres. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to line item six, six point one, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the City's Quarterly Financial Report. Mr. Carson. Councilwoman Zaburski?
Um, Robert, I don't want to be rude, but I have to leave here at six to go to my daughter's freshman orientation, so I just want to tell you if I get up and leave, it's not because of your presentation.
Thank you for that, sir.
It's a two-minute presentation, right? I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
I can make it five if you want to.
Awesome. Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Marchand, Robert Carson, City Treasurer for the record. So what we're here to go over tonight is our financial position for three major funds, three quarters of the way through the year. So unaudited through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, it's going to follow a similar format that we've seen before, so if you have any questions, just tolerate me. The first is just a breakdown of our cash for our general fund and our two enterprise funds. As you can see, there's been slight increases or, you know, keeping pretty much steady. So what we're spending, we're bringing in. There's a lot of things that haven't been purchased yet. Again, we're coming into construction season, so we'll see more cash going out. But for the most part, we're in goods, in a good spot in our cash balances. This is a breakdown of our investments by type, so the biggest one, we have longer-term investments. More cash going out, but for the most part, we're in goods, in a good spot in our cash balances. So good, you get to listen to it. This is a breakdown of our investments by type, so the biggest one, we have longer-term investments. More cash going out, but for the most part, we're in goods, in a good spot in our cash balances. So good, you get to listen to it. This is a breakdown of our investments by type, so the biggest one, we have longer-term investments. More cash going out, but for the most part, we're in goods, in a good spot in our cash balances. So good, you.
We were just subject to the matrix, weren't we?
I knew it. It's all part of my plan.
It's not a conspiracy. It's true.
All right, we good? Okay. So this is a breakdown of our cash and investment detail. So our checking account is that blue little slice up there, and it's, you know, four and a half million dollars is what we keep on hand. It's more than enough to make our regular bills, payroll, AP, everything else. We have just shy nineteen million invested with the state. We did have to transfer some funds out from the state to our checking account as the CRC is continuing to get closer to completion. The construction bills are coming in higher and higher, so we just got to make sure we have enough to pay the bills. And then the eighty-five million dollars that we have in Atlantic Capital, those are longer-term investments, higher yield, so we get more interest out of it. So the more money we can keep in there, the better off we are. They do have a very short-term investment strategy, so most of those funds are liquid. So if we ever needed five million dollars out of it, we could get to it, so. But overall, we have about a hundred and eight million dollars in cash and investments. And as I said, the ARPA funds, as the CRC is coming closer to completion, the ARPA funds are almost fully expended as of this month. They will be fully expended, I'm pretty sure, by the end of this month, and then we'll start making payments out of the TLT fund. So moving into our general fund, here's a summary of our revenues compared to budget. As you can see, the total revenues less the RTC funds is at eighty-eight percent and seventy-five percent through the year. So that's really good. We're, the revenue's coming in higher than what we budgeted for, because we budget in a conservative manner. So anytime you're over budget, it's a good thing. The fines and, or not the fines and forfeitures, the licenses and permits looks slightly low, but that's because we're a month behind on franchise fees. So there is another five, six hundred thousand dollars that's actually attributed to March, but just posted in April and May. And then the investment earnings, you can see we have over a million dollars so far this year. The returns have been absolutely great. Like I said, those longer-term investments have higher yields, so we're able to make more money. And here is a breakdown of the expenditures by category as of March thirty-first. The salaries are at sixty-seven percent of budget, benefits are at sixty-three percent, outside services, so on and so forth. And then the total is forty-seven point five two percent of budget. And that's mainly due because we have four million dollars allocated out of the general fund if we need it for the CRC. The way it's looking, I'm not sure we're going to need much of the four million dollars, but it's there in case we do, and any overruns or anything like that. So that's why that percentage is really low, because we have all that money sitting aside in case we need it. And then the RTC reimbursable, that'll really start ramping up as they get through to the street portion of Shadow Lane and the paving and the sidewalks, that all will come through there. Everything else right now is mainly running through the water and the sewer fund. So all in all, our net change in fund balance through March thirty-first is three million, which is, you know, seven million dollars higher than what we had budgeted. It's not going to end up at three million, but it's still good returns for the year. We, the revenues are coming in much higher than we budgeted for, and the expenditures are lower than what we budgeted for. This is a breakdown of the general fund expenditures by department with a percentage of the budget used. Again, the total overall expenditures less RTC will match the other one. And then total general fund expenditures are thirty-four percent of what was budgeted. So we won't have any budget issues coming to the end of the year, I don't think. Everything's on track and under budget. So we should be in a really good spot come the end of the year when we get everything posted. This is how our revenue breaks down by percentage. Our taxes coming in is the largest percentage. So if you saw, the property tax is actually already at a hundred percent of what was budgeted. Generally, you don't get a lot of property taxes toward the end of the year, so we'll be over budget, or over what we budgeted in property taxes for the year by a couple hundred thousand dollars probably. And then the next biggest portion is licenses and permits, so building permits, business licenses, franchise fees, all that. And here's a breakdown of expenditures by category. Our largest percentage here is salaries at thirty-six point six percent. Outside services comes in next at just shy of thirty percent. And then just a picture representation of what we had budgeted, revenues and expenditures versus reality through three thirty-one. So we budgeted that four million dollar deficit, but we're actually three million dollars in the positive, which is good. So we budgeted that four million dollar deficit, but we're actually three million dollars in the positive, which is good. And this is what it looks like with the R T C with minimal expenditures out of R T C so far this year. All right, any questions on the general fund before we move on to the water fund? So our water enterprise fund, uh, you can see our revenues are coming in, they're over the seventy-five percent of what we had budgeted, so the revenues are coming in strong. The way we had budgeted. Um, the expenses are also low. There's other expenses that don't happen until the end of the year, like I keep saying. Um, the depreciation won't happen until after the year when we finalize everything, so. That uh increase in that position will go down, because we'll have roughly three and a half million dollars of depreciation to post. Um, so it'll come down a little bit, but we should be above and better than what we budgeted for in that fund as well. And then again, just a picture of what we had budgeted versus what we have in reality. And then on the sewer fund, it's the same story as the water fund. Um, revenues are coming in very strong. Um. As we get towards the end of the year, we'll keep an eye on it, but they should come in what was above budget, because we don't have any of the capital contributions collected yet either. That comes with the fixed asset process. And then the expenses are coming in less than fifty percent, but again, they have depreciation to those assets that'll come in, so. It should be pretty close to what we had budgeted for the increase in that position. And then one last picture for you. And then just a summary of what we have. So through March, the revenues less R T C received are eighty-eight percent of budget. Um, the total expenditures less R T C are forty-eight percent of budget. And then the salaries and benefits are sixty-seven and sixty-four percent respectively, seventy-five percent through the year, so. We're on a good track. We should come in under budget on all of our expenditures in the general fund, and we should be in a good spot going into next year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Mendoza?
Hey, thank you for your uh presentation. I do have a question in regards to the um water budget. It looks like we did get our water study back, our rate study. Have you looked at that and have we looked at um lowering rates for our citizens of firmly with their water bills?
I I wasn't aware of a rate study coming in. I haven't seen anything um. As far as what we can do, we'll talk about it tomorrow night during the budget discussion, because that pertains to next year, so we will have a lengthy discussion on that one tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Torres?
Are we going to be um a little bit under? Budget for this community center or like right at what?
From what I've been told, we're pretty much under budget. Um, so we had twenty-two million, and I think the estimated cost at the end of it's going to be about eighteen. Um, there are things that happen at the end of it, but yeah, that's what we're projecting. I, like I said, I don't think we're going to have to. Dig into the four million dollars out of the general fund that we had set aside, if any, so we should be in a really good spot with it. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, if there's no other questions. Good job, Mr. Carson. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
We will now move on to line item. Um, seven, public forum disbursement, the meeting devoted to public. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person. At the meeting or raise your hand, feature Zoom. Star nine if you're participating via phone. Is there any public comment at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody on the phone? Okay, our next meeting will be May eighth at five P M. This meeting is adjourned.